Lifesavers instead of men.
Oh, no, these are accurate. Thank you, Lord.
We thought tonight's regular city council meeting would order an invocation by Pastor Mike Lee Van Tenen.
For those who all would like to participate in prayer, please join me as we address these following words to God. Gracious Lord, we acknowledge your sovereignty, provision, and guidance in our lives and in the life of our community. We thank you for the many blessings that you have given us in life. We thank you for the leaders in our community, those in this room, as well as those who tirelessly serve the citizens of Taylorville. This evening, we ask for your guidance and leadership as our city council meets to conduct the business of our town, as they gather to hear reports, gain information, and make decisions. May you guide each of them in heart and mind to do the most good in our part of your world. When disagreements arise, may a spirit of civility and a clear sense of purpose prevail in discussions and in decision-making. In all things, may we ever be mindful of your love, your guidance, and your blessings. This we pray in the name of Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Bud?
Here.
Shawn Burtle?
Here.
Ernie Dorchinez?
Here.
Grace Jones?
Here.
Lee Landzetti?
Here.
Jim Oliver?
Here.
Earl Walters?
Here.
Larry Bud?
Here.
Shawn Burtle?
Here.
Call Alderman President. Tonight, Volunteer of the Month. This guy has been a member of the Fair Board for thirty-five years, and at last count, we figured he's mowed the fairgrounds for over eight thousand acres in his time as mowing. Tonight, if Mr. Oliver would stand up, I'd like to honor him. Mr. Oliver. Volunteer of the Month is awarded to Jim Oliver for outstanding volunteerism with the Christian County Fair, whereas Jim Oliver has served on the Christian County Fair Board for thirty-five years and is the only past president to serve four consecutive years. Congratulations.
Thank you. I would like to say something and thank everybody for this, but there's some members of the Fair Board in attendance, and without these people, I couldn't do this and wouldn't want to do this. So, thank all of you guys for what all of you do, because this goes to you too. Now I know why. You will all pay.
Everybody else can walk down here and do too.
Congratulations.
You can go with my name.
Next, Jim.
Thank you.
There's cake and ice cream in my talking room for the family and the Fair Board members. Just leave some for the Alderman.
You mean you. Leave some for you.
The ominous vote designation.
Move.
Motion by Alderman Dorchinez. Second by Alderman Jones with the comment.
Yes, tonight, you have an amended ordinance committee minutes. Motions have not changed, but there's been some wording in there that just needed to be changed as far as the counts and stuff. So, just the narrative has changed, the motions have not.
Roll call.
Shawn Burtle?
Yes.
Yes.
Ernie Dorchinez?
Yes.
Grace Jones?
Yes.
Lee Landzetti?
Yes.
Jim Oliver?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Mayor Bud?
Yes.
Motion to approve eight to zero. Minutes of the public hearing meeting held July sixteenth, two thousand eighteen. Minutes of the regular meeting held July sixteenth, two thousand eighteen. Minutes of the ordinance committee meeting held July seventeenth, two thousand eighteen. Minutes of the finance committee meeting held July seventeenth, two thousand eighteen. Minutes of the public facilities committee meeting held July twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen. Minutes of the street sewer committee meeting held July twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen. Minutes of the special city council meeting held July thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. Minutes of the emergency service committee meeting held August second, two thousand eighteen. Motion to approve. By Alderman Burtle.
Second.
Second Alderman Walters. Roll call.
Ernie Dorchinez?
Yes.
Grace Jones?
Yes.
Lee Landzetti?
Yes.
Jim Oliver?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Mayor Bud?
Yes.
Shawn Burtle?
Yes.
Ernie Dorchinez?
Yes.
Shawn Burtle?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. Discussion regarding a proposed tax increment finance district redevelopment agreement by between the City of Canada, Christian County, Illinois, and Stoller Incorporated concerning the development of a Steak 'n Shake restaurant and any motions relating thereto. In your packet on Friday, you should have received the original agreement. There was a couple updates, and we'll give you the two pages that we had to change, a couple dates. This afternoon, Steak 'n Shake did approve the agreements, and so opened this up for discussion.
Any first comment? I will not be supporting this. I do not agree with the business district, the business developer district, especially the ninety percent of them receiving this. That's an indication to me that the TIF district is not providing the funds needed to bring in businesses, and with that being a primary or a very good-looking piece of property that we could find somebody who's willing to work with us without having to involve another, what is it, nine thousand plus dollars to get the thing started and roughly three, four thousand dollars a year maintained just to get a business in here. And we're passing that right back to them at ninety percent. The city's getting very little, so I won't be supporting this specifically because of the business district.
Any other comments or discussions?
Alderman. The city will get revenue from this. There's twenty-five percent of the tax increment financing that the city will receive. And then, the reason that they're getting ninety percent of the BDD is because of them putting in the road, the three hundred thousand dollar road, because the city does not have three hundred thousand dollars to put that road in. So, in return, they agreed to do that, and then we made the numbers at ninety percent, and that should pay them over the term of this agreement. This is a good thing for Taylorville. It's bringing in development that we definitely need, and, you know, it's going to help the community. It's bringing in jobs. It's just bringing in stuff, and I can speak at least for myself, that my hope is, is with them coming to town, that maybe other franchises will see that Steak 'n Shake is developing here, and if they're developing, then maybe we need to come to Taylorville, you know? This is a win-win for the community, any way you look at it.
Alderman Jones?
Yes, and after looking at the chart that we all have here, I know that we, as Martin alluded to, will be paying four thousand dollars a year to keep this BDD updated. After 2020, which, you know, it's going to take them that long to get this thing built, apparently, hopefully they can get it done shorter, but the city's share of the net REIT is going to be about eleven thousand, one hundred forty-nine to twelve thousand dollars, depending on their sales, how much tax they're going to get, plus the one percent of the BDD. So, that's more than enough to cover what is going to be used in this BDD, plus six thousand dollars, so.
Good. I might make one correction, Mr. Bud. The agreements, they're getting sixty percent of the net real estate, and we're getting forty percent.
I thought it was seventy-five.
No, sixty.
They changed that.
For the thirteen-year period.
That was changed then.
I think you might be right. I stand corrected. I was thinking about HSHF.
Yes.
You're correct, Mr. Bud, and shame on the mayor.
I hate to be repetitive and say the same thing somebody else says, but I too struggle with that one percent. You know, it started out that they were asking for the TIF, and then they asked for the one-fourth of one percent. We can raise the BDD up to one percent. They asked for one-quarter of a percent at first, and now it's risen, and this is for an extended period of time. It's for twenty-three years. They're going to be putting that in their pocket, and it really sets a precedence for everybody to come along. I don't know how you could ever not give anybody to come along that would want to come out there and put in a business and not give them the same thing. So, I think that's a little steep. It's going in their pocket. In fact, that money, if it went in the city's pocket, we could make good use of that right now, too. So, that's just my comment.
I might answer that. The reason it did get raised to ninety percent was because they are putting the road in. We do not have the money to put the road in. So, if we would come up with the three hundred thousand, then there is always a question of a quarter of it would have been probably the correct number, so. Looking for a motion. Motion by Alderman Bud. Second Alderman Burtle. The motion is to adopt the ordinance to approve and authorize the execution of a tax increment of the financial district redevelopment agreement between the City of Taylorville, Christian County, and Stoller Incorporated. Any other discussion?
Yes.
Alderman Walters?
I thought this might be the appropriate time. On Sunday, my wife and I drove down to Litfield and ate lunch down there at the Steak 'n Shake down there. We saw the new concept of the building. It's entirely different than the Steak 'n Shake that you're used to seeing in Springfield. And I had a personal tour of the facility, including the back rooms, the kitchen area, everything else, by the manager, Mr. Johnson. And it's a beautiful design. It's smaller than the ones in Springfield. It seats eighty people, or the ones in Springfield seat around a hundred. But it's state-of-the-art, very clean. It has patio dining outside the building with tables and umbrellas that serve people outside. It has state-of-the-art facilities and infrastructure on the inside, very good drive-through. It was a well-dressed-up business, and it had around eighty-seven employees down there, half and half, full-time, part-time, very cordial. He also knows the Bruno Brothers and said he was talking to them about things that they should be aware of and look out for. And I brought back with me, a pass, if you want to see him. This is their breakfast menu. This is their regular menu. So, I'm very happy and very pleased with it.
Mr. Walters?
This is quick, Alderman Burtle. Quick comment. And over the course of this whole TIF journey, I think sometimes we get lost in the fact that if this particular project's going to be a restaurant, and the other project's going to be a building that's going to lease out to a doctor's office or a physician's office. Really, that's not what the TIF district is about. I think we'd be better off if we didn't know what somebody's going to do out there. Somebody's going to build a building, or they're going to put a business in there, because it seems to me that most of the time, we get wrapped up in what the project is. And when we live in a town that's this small, everybody knows somebody. It's either in business or in competition, or they know somebody that was doing that business before, and they went out of business for whatever reason. And that's not what we, that's not what the TIF district are designed for. The TIF district is designed for to get development and community, and struggles to get development. And that's what this is doing. And I actually had a phone call today from a local business that was questioning what was available at the TIF district. So, obviously, even though these two particular developments aren't locals, there's people locally that I think, it sounds like they may be interested in either building a new facility or opening up something new. I think if we get out of the habit of being so worried about what the business is and get in the habit of trying to get development in community Taylorville, they'll be a lot better off. If somebody did this twenty-three years ago, we'd be sitting up for fat patty.
Yes, just in relation to Mr. Walters, do you have an extra copy of that breakfast menu? I'd like to give it to Brad Davis.
No, I don't. This is the one.
Okay, that's okay.
Roll call.
Grace Jones?
Yes.
Lee Landzetti?
Yes.
Jim Oliver?
Yes.
Martin Bota?
No.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Shawn Burtle?
Yes.
Ernie Dorchinez?
No.
Mayor Berry?
Mayor Berry, yes. Motion carries seven to two. Motion to authorize and direct the mayor to sign the final loan closing amendment for Phase Five Storm Sewer Project.
You missed one, Your Honor.
Pardon?
The ordinance?
You already did it.
We need both of you.
That was the vote.
The discussion, sorry, stand up. Yeah.
So, motion to authorize, direct, and mayor to sign the final loan closing amendment for Phase Five Storm Sewer Project.
Come on.
Motion by Alderman Dorchinez. Second Alderman Walters. Comments or questions? Roll call.
Lee Landzetti?
Yes.
Jim Oliver?
Yes.
Martin Bota?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Shawn Burtle?
Yes.
Ernie Dorchinez?
Yes.
Grace Jones?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. Motion to authorize, direct, and mayor to sign the final loan closing amendment for Northeastern Thirteenth Sanitary Sewer Project. Motion by Alderman Bud. Second Alderman Walters. Comments or questions? Roll call.
Jim Oliver?
Yes.
Martin Bota?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Shawn Burtle?
Yes.
Ernie Dorchinez?
Yes.
Grace Jones?
Yes.
Lee Landzetti?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. Motion to allow superintendent Wiseman to install twelve-hundred of twelve-inch corrugated storm lines from air lawn to clearing on the west side of Central Avenue to be paid by Ward Three Utility Tax.
Mr. Mayor? Before that motion is made, as you all know, Mr. Dorchinez and I are the Alderman for Ward Three, whose utility tax this is proposed to be done, and utility tax money is to be spent by the Alderman in that ward. Alderman Dorchinez wasn't there for that meeting where this was discussed, if it was discussed, because there's nothing in the minutes that was discussed, other than the committee wanted it to be put on the agenda. Neither one of us knew anything about this.
I think, I'll correct you on that, sir.
Well, I've got the floor, Mr. Walters, okay? I have the floor.
You continue then, sir.
When I talked with Mr. Dorchinez, neither one of us have been, knew that this project was on.
That's not true, sir.
Go ahead, Mr. Jones.
Okay, I'll speak for myself. I did not know that this project was going on and that it was going to be done with Ward Three Utility Tax money. That is a true, factual, and accurate statement.
I agree with you on that.
Okay. Now, when I talked with Mr. Dorchinez, he told me that he did not know about it either. Okay? Is that what you told me?
No, yeah, that's what I told you.
Okay, so that's what he told me. Utility tax money's to be spent with, in our wards for street projects, sidewalks projects, and stuff like that. So, now we have a new industrial park, and if the road were to go bad out there, would this council be expected, Ward Two, to be taking care of that whole road with their utility tax money? As far as I know, we have not done that in the past, right? So, with just the attempt of, and especially with what we're going to approve later on with the municipal utility tax procedures, this motion would never, ever come to fruition through committee. So, knowing that, and knowing that we've never done this before, and then opening my packet the other day, and seeing this motion on there, I was really taken aback. And I read the minutes, and it said that it was asked to be put on here to be done like that. Our utility tax money is not for that. The industrial park is, even though it sits in Ward Three, and those wards are in Ward Three, we've always taken funds out of the city's street department and the general fund, not utility tax money.
If I may, this is the way it went down. I got a phone call from Mr. Chris complaining about the drainage issue out by the church that sits on the corner of Central and Clearing, I believe. Dick Wiseman, myself, and Mr. Walters all went out there and met with Mr. Chris, and we came up with a solution. That, as we spoke, Mr. Chris, I believe, called Alderman Dorchinez. I think he was down in Florida at the time. And we explained the situation, and I believe it was asked, would you use Ward money to pay for this? And the answer I was told was yes. That you had told either John Chris or, I don't think that's who you talked to on the phone, and I'm not sure.
I did.
So, that is why it was put on the agenda as it was tonight.
Okay, Mr., I'm not going to speak for Alderman Dorchinez, but he just said that he did not say that he would use.
That's what I was told.
No, because first of all, Bruce and I, as Alderman in that board, would have to agree how to spend it. When I talked to John, I told him that when he called me, I said that I would talk to him when I got back, and that I'd have to talk to Bruce Jones. This is similar to the, I think, what Mr. Walters might be alluding to, is that Dick Wiseman, and this is why these kind of things that happen outside committees are the things that we normally run into, not normally. Oftentimes, when we run into trouble, it's normally because of this kind of a situation, okay? So, what I do is, when I get a telephone call on any kind of a paco, parking dog, junk car, whatever it is, I have a book that I log these in. In fact, when I read this and talked to Bruce, I went back and looked and thought, you know, maybe I talked about this and agreed to something in the past, but I looked at my book. I do not have anything in the book. I do not recollect committing to anything, and I wouldn't do that without talking to Alderman Jones. Well, anyway, what was in the book is, and maybe that's what they're thinking about, is when Dick Wiseman called me to talk about fixing the street, Clearing Avenue is in my book, and we were going to go the same length from, what is it, Air Lawn to, of Central Avenue's, Air Lawn to Clearing. Were those the streets that you were talking about, that street? Because I told you that I had, first of all.
That's what we was talking about, is the Storm Sewer then.
Oh, you were talking about the Storm Sewer then? I thought you were talking about the street.
No.
When I talked to Mr. Lay of White Line Trucking, he wasn't talking about the gutter. He wasn't talking about the stormwater. He was talking about the road. He said that road has not had any maintenance for years and years, but you're telling me that you, somebody was talking about this, not the road? You talked to me about the road.
John Chris talked to us about the drainage.
But White Line talked about the road.
White Line Trucking talked about the road.
Okay. And that's the only thing I got in my book that I committed to, and we hadn't talked. Well, you were going to go look at it. You and I visited, but you hadn't looked at the road yet, and then I went out and looked at it.
And since then, we're in the position, as far as the road goes, Alderman Dorchinez and I.
We have not committed.
We have not committed yet because we wanted to talk to you, because we have no numbers.
Yes.
Okay? But nowhere has that Storm Sewer been discussed, and I will speak for myself, with me. And so, I'm going to ask that this motion be stricken, and that this be brought up before the committee, the proper committee, which would be the Street and Sewer Committee, and that discussion be held there, and a motion be taken out of that committee to, and again, I have no idea how much it's going to cost, because I wasn't at the meeting, and I don't have any documentation that was given to me about this road or the sewers on how much it's going to cost. Is there going to have to be engineering? I understand Dick's guys do a lot. They can get a transit, they can set it, and they can do it probably without engineering. But in, I believe all those roads out there have been engineered, and if we do that, I mean, sometimes we'll get into a position. One of the manholes that I discussed with Dick and Mr. Lee was set too high, so they had to go back and they had to cut holes in it to make sure that it would take the water, because it was set too high. So, those are the kinds of things that need to be discussed in the proper committee, and I'm asking that this motion be taken off the table right now, until it's able to be discussed in Alderman Walters' Street and Sewer Committee. And I believe that that's the appropriate place.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes, Your Honor.
Alderman Walters?
I have to go on good faith from the minister, John Chris, that he wasn't going to lie to me, because he told me correctly out there that he, yes, I've owned, I talked to Alderman Dorchinez, and he agreed to take care of it out of the utility tax. Now, if you want to call John Chris the minister a liar, that's fine.
Let me tell you something. John Chris is my nephew, okay? And before, we've got issues with West Main Cross spending our money, and we would have to weigh this along with that project to see where that money lay. So, I'm not going to, and I don't have the ability to say that we're going to spend money on, without talking to Alderman Jones, and I wouldn't do that. So, I'll talk to Mr. Chris in the morning.
So, Mr. Walters, are you okay with Smith sending the motion until it's discussed?
Yes.
Your Street and Sewer Committee?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
City Attorney update. You should have one of these. Rocky sent us two this afternoon. I don't think I need to read it, but if I have to, I will read it, in case you guys didn't. One issue, one involves Zachary Wells lawsuit. There's still Wells, a seller in the class for the property desires required for the city to distribute its closure area will lead to the city. His attorney indicated there may be some suggestive revisions to the agreement, but I've yet to receive any communication concerning saying, for some unknown valid reasons, Chicago Title has indicated they do not want to be a part of the global release settlement agreement, but I am told they are willing to enter into a separate agreement with the city concerning the ten thousand dollar payment to the city as part of the settlement. Hopefully, all these issues will be satisfactorily resolved by the August twentieth city council meeting. Steak 'n Shake project, we approved already. We signed, or we'll sign it after the meeting. The resolution on the waiver of competition for architectural engineering and land surveying services under twenty-five thousand dollars, the resolution. Task is a proposed resolution to be adopted at the August twentieth city council meetings. We'll do that on August twentieth. The city clerk received an FOIA request from the attorneys representing Grace Hoffman concerning the incident involving city employee Dick Reber, and Rocky has emailed a copy of the proposed response letter. We can receive a copy. Why?
Can I ask you a quick question? In the past, not at all, point, past employees, but in the past, when we have an employee issue.
I know, we had one in the police department, too. I can't remember.
I think there was another one. I can't remember which department it was out of. The city council, as far as the Alderman go, we're always the last people to know. They come in here at the very last second and say, all right, we've been sued, or we agreed to pay X amount or whatever, and we try to play catch-up, because we don't get the information ahead of time. At some point, since now they're giving F.O.I.A., and I'm understanding that he's got his own attorney, but at some point, are we going to be filled in as far as what's going to be expected of us at a later date? Because I don't want to vote on something again, like we did with the last police officer, where we had no idea what was going on.
I will do my best to get all the information that I received myself. I have not received anything more than what you have right now.
And I think, and if you don't, then I think that we need to make a request that the city be in for us.
I think the last I heard it was turn to retire insurance carrier, and they are working on it. Rocky with the FOIA request, so.
Can I speak to them?
As soon as I hear all the information.
Can I speak to them?
Yes.
It came to me from Knosky Brezny, which is who this woman has hired, and she requested as much information as we could provide, which we gathered from the water department, from other departments, and that was sent to Rocky for his approval. He spoke with our insurance company, which is the very end of our time with one beacon. So, they are handling it from here at this time. If anything further comes through, I'd be more than happy to.
Yeah, I'm sure Rocky is going to put it in form, but we're going to get in trouble with us, you know? We've had to issue two or three different types, where we're basically going to go there at the last second. basically in the dark until we're last second.
Number five, Los Van Charles Liquor Control Violation. A couple of weeks ago, Los Van Charles lost their state liquor license through, I think, non-payment of sales tax. And so, of course, we then revoked their city license. Day or two later, they were caught serving alcohol without the city license. And so we fined them $750, they didn't come in and pay that, they sold their license, they got their state license back, also their tattered liquor license, they received it. Then the Ameren Gas Electric Franchise Agreement renewals, and Rocky sent you guys all an email on August 2nd, and so if you have any questions about Rocky, he'll be back next week.
That will be on the finance agenda next Thursday.
And number seven, revised motions, the four motions under public facilities and street sewer concerning Tullis, Morse, Leific, Vision Infrastructure Construction Corporation, a band of inter-invention, should include the following, subject to execution of the city's formed contract with submitted requisite certificate of insurance and performance and payment bonds. And then number eight, motion under emergency services, the most concerning waiver of conflict of interest should be motion to acknowledge and waive any conflict of interest of the city attorney representing the city and the Tattletale Fire Protection District concerning negotiation, preparation, execution of the fire protection services, emergency medical and/or rescue services, agreement and related matters thereto. The Mayoral update. As summer winds down, I would like to thank the summer help and jobs well done. I will hold an appreciation luncheon for all the summer help on this Friday at noon at City Hall. We have demolished another house, which was located at 616 East Cleveland Street. We're going to Cherokee Street next, and then possibly walk back to Wine Dot later in the month. We're in the process of getting Walnut Street project started. I think we've got all the paperwork, and I assume Engineer Joe Green signed the property thing today.
I believe so.
Okay? I also like to thank the former city clerk Pam Peabody for her help closing the Phase Five Street Sewer Project and the Northeastern 30-inch sanitary sewer district. She came in and worked and did that at no charge to the city. Finally, I'd like to thank the Aldermen for approving the TIFF development agreement with Staky Shake. I think it's a, it's a tool that we're using to bolster the northeast, northwest corner of our town, I think it will come to fruition soon. I would especially like to take this time to thank the Aldermen for all their great work within the community. Tonight, I honored Alderman Olive for all his work with the Christian County Fair. Last year, Alderman Walters was honored as volunteer of the year through the chamber. Alderman Voda currently serves as the president of the Quants Club. Alderman Bud works with Downtown dot org and continues to work at keeping our schools safe. Alderman Jones and Lanzotti work with their various church organizations, and Alderman Jones does a wonderful job at the fishing claim put on by his father-in-law. Alderman Burdo worked with cleaning up Tattletale. And finally, to Alderman Dorch and Iz for his great work at McDonald's with organizing and keeping the peace. The Alderman's work goes on in the morning at McDonald's. Thank you very much. We have to be leaders in our community as we try to do more with less money coming in. Thank you very much.
Thank you, too. That's good enough.
Okay. Committee reports, discussion and/or motions to approve, adopt, and/or deny, and/or table, and/or amend, and/or refer to an appropriate committee and hold or impart the matters regarding the following subject matters discussed at the committee level. Ordinance committee, Alderman Jones.
Thank you very much. I have two amended motions that aren't on the agenda. The first is a motion by Alderman Walters, and second by Alderman Bud, recommended the city council to divide the $400,000 that has not been divided in the past, that is in the street maintenance fund, five ways. One-fifth to each ward, and one-fifth to the new common street maintenance account. Once the common street maintenance account reaches a balance of $300,000, any money distributed to the street maintenance fund will be divided four ways equally amongst four wards. That motion carried four to zero. I'd like to make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Jones, second by Alderman Bud. Discussion?
Comment, Your Honor?
Comment, Alderman?
I believe during our discussion on that, we were going to make sure that those, anytime those funds were to be utilized, that it would come to the committee, recommend, they recommended to the city council to approve spending the funds for that particular project. I think that needs to be written into this, and that will, uh, affect, be written into the ordinance.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that amendment.
That's not true. That's not true, it doesn't come to the city council. The two Aldermen, that, but we-
I'm talking about the fifth division. The bucket, the rainy day bucket?
Oh, that makes sense.
I didn't, I didn't understand you meant that.
We made you not forgive you, but I'm trying to get-
I didn't mean, I didn't hear you now. I didn't know this.
I'll repeat it later.
Okay, I'll, I, I'm, I'm fine with that amendment. Thank you, Margaret.
Alderman Bud, second amendment.
Yes.
Okay. Roll call.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Alderman Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
John Burdo?
Yes.
Bernie Dorch and Iz?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Lee Lanzotti?
Yes.
Jim Olive?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Alderman Walters?
Motion carries eight to zero.
Our second motion was made by Alderman Walters, second by Alderman Lanzotti, directed the city council to direct the city attorney to amend the Tattletale City Code to incorporate into Title III, Section 2-4, the municipal utility tax money procedure as presented with the following amendment to number three. The street maintenance fund represents the total amount of monies that is divided by five, equally, one-fifth to each ward, and one-fifth to the common street maintenance account. That motion carried four to zero.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Jones, second by Alderman Dorch and Iz. Roll call.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
John Burdo?
Yes.
Bernie Dorch and Iz?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Lee Lanzotti?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. Finance committee, Alderman Bud.
Okay, thank you, Your Honor. The first motion was to recommend the city council distribute $5,000 to the Christopher County Senior Citizen.
Second.
Form motion?
Motion by Alderman Bud, second by Alderman Jones. Roll call.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
John Burdo?
Yes.
Bernie Dorch and Iz?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Lee Lanzotti?
Yes.
Jim Olive?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
The second motion was to recommend the city council, doing an agreement with the firm represented by Mr. Doug McDermott, as suggested by Ms. Mary Renner, based on a clarification of item two in the agreement, and present to the city attorney for reviewing guards to the enterprise zone, make that form motion with a comment.
Motion by Alderman Bud. Second by Alderman Walters. Comments, Alderman Bud?
Um, this is, uh, the enterprise zone is about to expire, I think it's 2021, or, um, and what we're, they're doing is they're gonna go to some of the businesses that have received enterprise funds, and try to get them to help, uh, pay for the cost of making this new enterprise zone, renewing the enterprise zone. So, um, this is to help get that, and his cost will be taken out of that, that, that fund, is the way I understood it.
I have a question for clarification.
Okay. Okay, in the minutes, and I know we discussed it, sixty to a hundred thousand dollars for this, is that for the complete transition to renew this?
Complete it up to-
Okay, so we, if, we will pay a percentage of that, and we're trying to get it paid for by the current recipients who receive.
Correct.
Okay, and I believe a question you brought up, will the county or any other facilities be assisting with the financial-
Soon they will.
Okay, thank you.
The county already agreed to pay Mr. McDermott, as we agreed to pay him, he gets 10% of the money that he does collect, too.
Thank you.
Alderman Walters?
Have we got, have we received the clarification on item two? Has anyone seen it? I haven't.
And I can amend it, but we'll get the clarification on that.
Yeah. Amended to the clarification on item two. Okay, roll call.
John Burdo?
Yes.
Bernie Dorch and Iz?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Lee Lanzotti?
Yes.
Jim Olive?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
The final motion was to recommend the city council accept the treasure report as presented, make that form motion.
Motion by Alderman Bud.
Second.
Second by Alderman Olive. Roll call.
Bernie Dorch and Iz?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Lee Lanzotti?
Yes.
Jim Olive?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
John Burdo?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. Public facilities, Alderman Olive?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, motion to recommend the city council to allow Phil Tullis to do the demolition and remove, removal of old concrete, replace the concrete at community building with the city paying for the, the concrete. Allow Alderman Olive to have handrails installed and more electric to install lighting, at the cost of the project not to exceed $17,500, subject to funds being available and approved by the treasurer. I might put that in form of motion.
Motion by Alderman Olive, second by Alderman Walters. Comments or questions? Alderman Dorch and Iz?
First question is, what, what does that mean with the city paying for the concrete?
We actually have a bid with all the concrete, so that, we pay for that anyhow, so it's not part of this, uh, I don't know exactly what the concrete was, was it thirty-two hundred dollars?
I didn't bring that number with me, but we did discuss that number, I can't take exactly what it was now.
For some reason, I thought the concrete was thirty-two hundred, but it was-
I'm, I'm really struggling with this, I've struggled with it about four different times. Each time, it keeps coming back to the same thing. I called Jim Olive today and told him that I was not happy with what he did. When I was absent, he knew that, uh, that he could take advantage of me being gone, and try to ram, ramrod this through. First of all, before this came about, I was directed to contact Kevin Hamlin, to see if, what could be done about patching those places that have eroded on that pavement. And Kevin had not gotten back with me, I called him again and left a message, and he's, he's a busy man. And then, and then after that, Jim Olive called me and, and said, you know, would he, would I mind if he contacted Tullis? And so, and I thought that he meant, would he, would I mind if he had Tullis do the same thing that Kevin Hamlin was gonna do? Kevin Hamlin was gonna go down and look at that, those cracks and, and all where the erosion has taken place, and give us advice, free advice, by the way, and I, I made sure that that was the case. He was just gonna look at that, and give us some advice as to what could be done. So what I was looking at, looking for was, there's different kinds of concrete that you can patch with, and I thought that Kevin would give us a, a good idea of what, what patch that he recommended, and, and then I thought, once we got the recommendation, then maybe somebody from Dick Weisman's area could do the test patch and see what it looked like? And that was the plan. So the, once he got Tullis involved, I thought that he was gonna take over the same task that Kevin Hamlin was gonna do, but he did not. What he planned, what he did, he had Tullis give us a, a price on, and I wasn't at the meeting, you understand? He gave the committee a, a price on and an idea of what he was gonna do. And what he was gonna do, he's gonna tear the entire top of the concrete off, I don't know how far, that wasn't in the minutes. You're gonna tear all the concrete off the top, off of the, the incline. And, and so that, that went on to further discussion at the committee, and that's not in detail in here, but from reading the minutes, it sounds like that what he was gonna do was to eventually tear the whole thing out like he had planned in the first place, to the tune of, of $17,000. You know, when this started out, when this started out, the, the plan was to, to fix the problem as far as it being an eyesore. It was an eyesore, they didn't like that. So when it was gonna be, and then we're gonna tear out all that, the green ring, the walls and everything, I think that the, the total then was like $27,000, it was outlandish. Well then, when that didn't work, it came to, um, that incline is a, is a hazard in the wintertime, and I would agree with that, absolutely. You shouldn't be going up that incline if there's snow, ice, and maybe just even rain on that, on that incline. So it became a, now it's switched from an eyesore to a health, to a health issue, a safety issue. And so I made a suggestion in the past, and nobody bought into it. If it's a safety issue and, and it's gonna be used for parking, okay, there's five parking places there, that's how many people can park. All right, if it's a safety issue, I, my suggestion was to chain that off, put a chain across it, you don't park there anymore, okay? That would get rid of that problem. A chain doesn't cost very much. And what you would lose is, you can put three parking places in front of that opening, three parallel parking places in front of that opening. Okay, so you've lost two parking places by doing that. Also, there's a, there's a parking spot to the west of that opening, where you go up the incline. And recently, a sign was put up there, was that, is that a brand-new sign? Was that by permit only before you put up the sign? So you just replaced a bad sign?
No.
No, you put up a brand-new sign?
It's a brand-new parking stall.
Whose parking stall is that? Who's that sign? Public and, and private? Us and, and public?
As far as I know. Never issued anybody a ticket, says by permit only. What we originally did that for, we thought when we give the treasurer down the hallway down here, closer parking spot for her.
Okay, well-
What the original idea was. And she said she can still park at her normal spot, so.
Well, what I've been told is that nobody parks there. So if we take that sign down, we've got four parking places where we've got five now. And I don't think that one parking place that you're gonna gain, or lose, I'm sorry, you're gonna lose one parking spot, and I don't think it's, it's worth $17,500 to do it. I think if you chain that off, and, and I still think that the, the concrete ought to be patched, I don't think it ought to be replaced, that's way too much money to do that. We, we, we have a lot of other places to put that money besides putting it in a place that we, that does not need to be done, it absolutely doesn't. Also, the, if, if you noticed recently, uh, there was a water problem in, in front of the police department, and that was dug up, I don't know what, what Mr. Spiegel did, but anyway, when that concrete was put back, it was put back exactly like it was, and it's an incline. I, my question to Mr. Olive, why, why would that, why wouldn't you be concerned about that being flagged?
Because I think it probably meets ADA requirements for the, for the elevation.
But it's still, it's still a, a hazard, that incline's a hazard, I, I think there's a better ADA way of solving that problem, but anyway. Wait, I'm not, I, I need to look through the line of denied notes. There's several other items going through this. Now, there's several other parking issues out there, when I was looking at this over the weekend, across the, across the street, there's, there's a couple of places over there that's marked it, that you can only park there fifteen minutes, that doesn't make sense. Okay, so, anyway, with, with this idea, and, and to put up a, a rail at the top, I think that, as I've driven around town, those, those rails are an invitation for skateboarders, okay? They skate there all the time, anyplace they can go, even when there's a sign up. So I think that that too is a, you're creating another he, a health, safety issue when you put that rail up, if that's, and I don't know what it's gonna look like, but anyway, then you're, in addition to that, when you put that up in the front of that wall that you're gonna put it up, then you're also gonna be blocking the municipal building with whatever that is, okay? That's not gonna look very good, if you're trying to, if you're talking about appearance. So I am adamant against this, and I'm really upset that, that you would put this on the agenda, and when I'm not there to, to give you my opinion at the council, at the committee meeting, and then it comes to the council in this regard.
Alderman Olive?
I'd, I'd, I'd like to address the fact that Mr. Dorch and Iz, um, you know, he, he has his right to his opinion, and I will respect that. But I would like to make one thing very clear, and I, I thought I had done that today when Mr. Dorch and Iz called. I did not know the night of the meeting that Mr. Dorch and Iz would not be there. I was informed by the committee meeting, because Mr. Dorch and Iz had failed to let me know as committee chair that he would not be in attendance. So to state that I done that behind his back, I think is a rather low blow, because it was not my intent, did not know he would be there. So that is my statement towards that, because I did not know you were not going to be there, Mr. Dorch and Iz. Other facts, it, you know, what we're using now in, in parking spaces is actually the ramp to come out of the firehouse, when, when it used to be the firehouse. It's on a, I don't know what degree of incline, but it's a steep incline. It wasn't made to start with for parking. We changed the, uh, what I wanna say, the operations of the city hall, the fire department is now housed in another location. The fire department is now housed in another location. We changed everything but the, the fact that it's still a ramp. It's always going to be a ramp until we change that fact. It's not meant to be parked on. It is a safety hazard. It's presently a safety hazard in, with the condition of the concrete. It's a safety hazard in the wintertime when it gets snow on it. I did talk about patching to Mr. Tullis, and he said that you patch it, and the rest of concrete's in the same shape as what's already popped out. And he said a pop will come loose quicker than the new concrete, so that, that's the reason why I'm dead set against putting a patch in there, because to me, we're just wasting our money, because it will pop right back out within a matter of a few years.
Alderman Voda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Coming out of committee, I didn't support this, but I have recently been parking on that slope coming in the city hall. And one of the big issues I have there is when I go to leave backing out, it's difficult to see traffic. I mean, is it, with that, that, whether you have a slope or it be flat, there's going to be difficulty seeing traffic coming out of your back. So, I, I don't like that. The other thing I'm looking at is, we have a municipal parking lot directly west of the city, right in city hall. And I don't know why we're not focusing on that, because one of the things Mr. Aldman did state is we want this to look nice, this is the, a, going to be basically the, the focal point of anybody who comes to the city to do business is going to be here. So, and I don't disagree with that. But we are patching or making a change to something that is not totally distracting when we could possibly take the same amount of money and do a marvelous job in that parking lot and start expanding the, the quality of what we have downtown. Right across the street from there is the old, is the old Ford dealership building in it. It looks like, yeah. Bottom line, it just doesn't look good, and that's right downtown. If we leave that parking lot on the west side the way it is, and that's what we have for our visitors to the community, that's what we use for, George uses that for his truck, that's where the city vehicles should be pulling in when they want to do city business. Customer parking is out in the front of the building, and, and I think that's a good thing. But to fix this incline or do something to that, when we're letting that parking lot sit there and deteriorate we have over the years, I think that's the wrong way to do. I think moving on the parking lot would be first. The other thing that kind of I struggled with, and I, I didn't even think about it that night, and I think I brought it up with you during the discussion, is Mr., Mr. Bud stated that we want to be cautious on what we're spending right now until the audit is completed, and you did make that comment. And I brought that up with the mayor at the meeting that night, and asked when we expect that audit to be completed, and you'd stated probably September by the corporate record. So, with that, I would like to hold off on any type of, of spending until we know where we're at financially, and take another revisit of where do we really want to invest this, this type of money into parking for city hall, which will get the most bang out of the buck. And I, I truly believe that parking lot west of city hall would be, would be an asset to the community if we can put a few dollars in the back. Thank you, your honor.
I have a question. In, in the, in the motion, it also says that with the funds being available and approved by the treasurer, I have two questions. I asked Larry Bud, Larry, do you think this is money well spent with the situation we're in? That's one question, and then I would ask the treasurer. In here, it says in the motion that, subject to the funds being available, and I've not heard today back review that the funds were available.
Mr. Olive did call me today, or, no, I'm sorry, you stopped in and talked to me this morning. I looked at our balance as of the end of July this year and compared it to last year. We are down 1.6 million compared to last, last year at this time, so I'm not too comfortable with it because we don't know what monies will be coming in. You know, we hope that we'll be get, getting extra, you know, sales tax and, you know, those monies start coming in, but we don't know.
And did you...
So, I, I don't have a, you know, comfortable feeling with it, but that's your decision to make. The mayor did come up with another idea of what to use, so...
And then, didn't you report last month that you said that the, the income from telecommunications taxes paying for the fire department truck, I mean, not the direct for the building, is about eight thousand dollars short?
It's decreasing.
And so, we're, we're, have we figured out about that, how to solve that problem yet?
Well, eventually, we'll, you know, depending on when that money starts getting less and less, we'll have to use the general fund to put into that.
Alderman Lanzotti?
I went and looked at it yesterday, prior to this review, where the saw cuts were made on the ramps, the incline that you're talking about. There is, between the areas, it's, it's, it's breaking up. However, and I kicked it around and looked at it, I think that Mr. Wiseman would go, if he could go there with a compressor, a heavy-duty compressor, wash that out, clean that rock out of there, and maybe even if it comes down to it, make saw cuts and take an impact camera and break that out, cover that back in five X concrete or six X concrete, or I don't know what you use here, but the state would, they would fix that on the highway, and it would be relatively good for any traffic that would go there. What tears that joint up is, over the years, trucks have parked there, cars have parked there, leaks out sodium, you know, salt from the cars dripping off there, melting. And anytime you get, and you'll tell them this, won't you? That anytime you get the salt on concrete pavement, it deteriorates. So, I'm, I'm saying that $17,000, I'm not in favor of that. If you go in there and try to patch those, which there's quite a few patches, but I